All right. It is now 10:02. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We apologize for starting a little bit late, but as you can see by the number of chairs that are filled, we have a pretty full room here. So we will get started with the Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be led today by Deputy District Attorney Doug Ritchie.
If you could please stand and join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is public comment. If you are here for a specific agenda item, please wait until that item is heard before you make your public comment. And everyone is allowed three minutes. The open meeting law does not expressly prohibit responses to public comments by the commissioners, however, responses from commissioners to unlisted public comments and topics should become deliberated on a matter without notice to the public. In other words, if you bring up something, we may or may not be able to discuss it. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and the Board of Commissioners uses timing lights to ensure everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin, a yellow light, which indicates that you have 30 seconds left and that you should conclude your comments. Once the light turns red, please sit down. And with that, I will open for public comment for anything that is not on the regular agenda.
Good morning. Ellie Waller. This is an example of why we Douglas County need to be part of the approval process to avoid things that come up, and I'm not sure why we don't have a better process. I'm going to liken this to Johnson Lane. This comment is, we all should be at the table before we have issues that come forward. Today, I'm going to be talking about, I will be attending the Legislative Oversight Committee for the TRPA tomorrow, Friday. There's a request authored by our county manager and Chair Daly, and I'm requesting it be modified or at least have information brought forward. I don't know if it should have come to this board before it went to the Oversight Committee. I don't know at whose direction this request is. Send a letter to TRPA encouraging TRPA to consider exempting local events for Douglas County's South Lake Tahoe and El Dorado County for the current restriction on the total number of events and activities which we can take place at the Tahoe Event Center. Request the TRPA provide an update on the status of the permit restrictions. It's all fine and well that we want meeting space. We pay 1, the Douglas County people pay 1.3 million, which helped the bond for the event center. If this is truly going to be considered additional information on vehicle miles traveled for this, which this condition was assigned as a mitigation, there was lots of controversy. I sat through those meetings. The Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority must complete VMT analysis, which should include microtransit usage, et cetera. Also, in this ask, if we truly want to use the center, where are the people going to park for free? And I believe if you're allowing El Dorado County and the city of Lake Tahoe to use it, they paid nothing. They should have to pay for meeting space. Next, I hope you'll read the Mountain News issue August. In here, we've got to be really careful how Douglas County is represented. Jacob Stock from the TRPA said, "The county argues that 85 feet is required." Argues what, where, when, and how? That kind of comment is a perception problem in my book. For many Douglas County staff, residents, and members that attended the summit yesterday, what you didn't hear is the concerns that the citizens have brought forward to elected officials, appointed officials, the TRPA, et cetera. Vacation home rental transportation impacts have never been analyzed. That's a TRPA thing and should come in their regional transportation plan. It's not there. We, as Douglas County, need to start inserting our opinions. The gushing over the East Shore Trail expansion to Spooner doesn't provide information. There's crosswalks 250. I'll finish this later. Thank you.
Jim Slade. The final agenda item on nearly every agenda, including today, is, quote, "announcements, reports, updates from county commission members, including updates on the various boards and our commissions that they may be a member of or a liaison to, meetings, functions they have attended." That would be as a board member representing Douglas County, such as reports on the Audit Committee, or the Library Board, or the Chamber of Commerce, or NACO. At your August 1st meeting, however, Chairman Rice went way beyond the scope of that agenda item and talked about an event he attended where he neither represented the board nor Douglas County. He claimed that he represented the state of Nevada, but that was untrue. He stated that he attended the, quote, "national convention," without ever mentioning that what he was referring to was the Republican Party Convention. So he did not represent the state of Nevada, nor Douglas County, nor this board. Hence, his comments were inappropriate and likely violated NRS and the open meeting law. Electioneering and party grandstanding are completely unacceptable for a commissioner during a meeting. Look, we know that all of you are Republicans, but as elected officials, you represent all residents of Douglas County, not just some of them. Doesn't matter how proud and thankful you were to be a delegate to the Republican Convention, Mr. Rice. Partisan political engineering has no place in comments made while acting as a county commissioner. On another topic. The worst board decision this century was the vote a few years back by Commissioners Rice, Walsh, and Penzel for a master plan amendment to transfer a receiving area from Topaz to the heart of the Carson Valley. That was not only of dubious legality, but also contrary to the master plan, the town's plans for prosperity, and the clear desire of county residents. It also provided an enormous windfall profit to Park Ranch Holdings, likely in the range of $100 million. You should at least have required a dedication of the 57 acres, or whatever it was, that you ended up buying as a location to build the Judicial Center. But no, you ended up paying for that, further enriching Park Ranch. And what thanks do you get now? Park Ranch has sued to stop Douglas County from working to build Muller Parkway, which is required to be completed by the end of next year. It's too bad that you can't just rescind the entire master plan amendment and receiving area in response. That decision would be supported by a majority of county residents, but somehow, I guess, I'm guessing that's not going to happen. Remember the quote attributed to Benjamin Franklin. "If you lie down with dogs, you get fleas."
Good morning, and I'm not talking about Johnson Lane yet. I read the article in the paper about Park, and I also saw a letter that was a supplemental. These two items, to me, bring up the abuse that these contractors, developers, builders take of all the people in the valley. Seems like they come first, and we all come second. I don't think that's quite fair, and our defense against this are you folks there. And we hope you stand up for us, and we know you have been, and we know you will be, and everything. But it's discouraging when we see these developers and builders come in, and then after they've made a deal, they sue you because they want to change it. They want to make more money. Forget what it does to us in the valley, the residents that have to put up with all the damage that they create and all the turmoil that they create and everything. So I just wanted to bring that up before we get into the meat of things later on in the day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Nick Nichols, longtime Douglas County resident, taxpayer, one of the many people that goes out in the hills, cleans up our area on his own time and dime, so that's who I am. I just had a kind of a kindly suggestion as far as responding to the people who you serve, since elected people are actually public servants, that it would instill confidence, I think, in people at our county level, just to have, to make sure that people's inquiries or phone calls are followed up with, responded to. Private businesses can choose to run crappy business practice and not get back to you, but I think it should be the responsibility, and maybe lack of a better term, like the Ten Commandments of, in the Ten Commandments of a public entity, to, that that would be a core thing that you would always follow up with, people's emails, phone calls. I get it, there's a lot going on. Life is busy, but we're just at the county level, we can't control on the national level. We let people, you can't, then they want to shake your hand to get elected, then you can never get a hold of them. They're, like, unreachable. So at the county level, I would like to think that that wouldn't be the case. So it's just, again, it's a suggestion to, hopefully that could be a very high level of importance of a follow-up with your constituents, of people who actually have put trust in you to do what, you know, we expect to be done for handling county business. Not every little personal thing that everybody wants you to do, I get it. So it's just, again, it's a kindly suggestion, and I know it's a lot of work and all this stuff y'all do. So anyways, that's that, and hopefully that'll be taken with, you know, weighed heavily just to keep people's confidence and not have that, well, they don't care. At a county level, I would think we could do better than on a state or national level.
My name is Carol Strahle, and I live at the end of Tony Court. This is in regards to the PRM. I first want to say, I want to thank my high school speech teacher, Mrs. Raider, for showing me that I could have the courage to stand up and speak in front of whoever. If it wasn't for her, I wouldn't have come up here so much and speak. Anyway, I want to thank her for that. I just want to say that when it comes to the vote today regarding the PRM, you guys have our lives in your hands, and I hope that you think about that when it comes time to making your vote, because it is so important for all of us to stay healthy and to have an enjoyable life, whatever's left of it. And I hope you can think about that, that it's not just about the mine, it's about everybody who's going to be involved. Anyway, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to remind the public, please hold your comments regarding the agenda items until we get to those items. Is there any further public comment? Seeing none. I will bring it back to the board and close public comment. And next item on the agenda would be the approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I need a motion.
Mr. Chair. I move for the approval of the proposed agenda as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And we need approval of the previous minutes for possible action discussion to approve the draft minutes of the July 18th, 2024, regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Any changes or additions to the minutes? Seeing none. I need a motion.
I move approval of the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, without further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. We will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Douglas County Liquor Board, under Sheriff Elges.
Okay, she's going to read the record, sir.
For possible action discussion to approve the addition of Corina Osborne to the existing retail package liquor license, onsite unrestricted license, and entertainment endorsement for the Edgewood Companies doing business as the Lodge at Edgewood. Corina Osborne has signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Edgewood Companies DBA, the Lodge at Edgewood, is located at 180 Lake Parkway State Line, Nevada, 89449, under Sheriff Elges.
Thank you, sir. Under Sheriff Ron Elges for the record. We reviewed the application, and we are not contesting the additional name.
I might add that, acting as the Liquor Board, we have an additional vote, which is our Sheriff Dan Coverly. Did I say it right this time? My wife's always on me about that one. Okay. Any comments?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the addition of Corina Osborne to the existing package retail liquor license, onsite unrestricted license, and entertainment endorsement for the Edgewood Companies DBA Lodge at Edgewood. Corina Osborne has signed a waiver of notice of hearing and Edgewood Companies DBA, the Lodge at Edgewood is located at 180 Lake Parkway State Line, Nevada, 89449.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? And I am informed that we do not need public comment on this one, so we'll move into the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Item number two, for possible action, discussion to approve the addition of Corina Osborne to the existing package retail liquor license and onsite unrestricted license and entertainment endorsement for Edgewood Companies doing business as Edgewood Lake Golf, Lake Tahoe Golf Course. Corina Osborne has signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Edgewood Companies doing business as Edgewood Tahoe Golf Course is located at 180 Lake Parkway State Line, Nevada, 89449, again, under Sheriff Elges.
Thank you, sir. Again, Ron Elges, under Sheriff, for the record. We reviewed the application, and we are not contesting the additional name.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a motion?
I move approval as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, all those not in favor, say nay. Motion carries 6-0. Item number three, for possible action, discussion to approve the addition of Carter Joseph Amaral, Ron Wayne Baker, and Stephen John Sinetti to the existing onsite unrestricted retail liquor and restricted gaming license for the Audible LLC doing business as The Audible, as represented by owner Carter Amaral. Carter Amaral, Ron Baker, and Steve Sinetti have signed a waiver of notice of hearing. The Audible is located at 290 Kingsbury Grade, Suite 1, State Line, Nevada, 89449, again, Sheriff Elges.
Thanks again, sir. Under Sheriff Ron Elges for the record, all three applicants, the application's been reviewed, and we're not contesting the name additions. Thank you, sir.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair. I move the approval of the addition of Carter Joseph Amaral, Ron Wayne Baker, and Stephen John Sinetti, I, Sinetti, I don't know, to the existing onsite retail, onsite unrestricted retail liquor and restricted gaming license for the Audible LLC DBA, The Audible, as represented by owner Carter Amaral, as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 6-0. We will now adjourn as the Douglas County Liquor Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. We'll move on to the consent calendars. We, I need a motion to approve consent calendar items presented A through N.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Motion to approve the consent calendar items N, A through N, as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do I need public comment on this? We need no public comment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We will move on to the administrative agenda. Item number one. For possible action, discussion to amend the previously approved Harvey's Outdoor Concert Series permit for the August 9th, 2024 event to be rescheduled to August the 20th or another date agreed upon. Due to the unforeseen circumstances, it will be from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM in the back parking lot at Harvey's Lake Tahoe Hotel and Casino, 18 Highway 50 State Line, State Line, Nevada, subject to the previous approved conditions and comments submitted by Caesar's Entertainment Doing Business as Harvey's. Our county clerk recorder, Amy Bergens.
Thank you, Amy Bergens, Douglas County Clerk Treasurer. Basically, you have said everything that I was going to say. This was an event that, for unforeseen circumstances, had to be postponed to another date. They did decide on August 20th. All the approvals are the same. They are not requesting any changes other than the date, so the packet that we submitted prior is the packet that you have in front of you. We do have Ashley Duke here, representing Harvey's and Hera's, their outdoor festival, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Seeing none. No questions from the board. This is a, for possible action. Are there any public comments regarding this event? Seeing none. I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Move to conditionally approve the outdoor festival permit for Harvey's, allowing, allowing the August 9th, 2024, Harvey's Outdoor 2024 Concert Series to be rescheduled to August 20th, 2024, or insert other date as agreed upon, closed parentheses, subject to the previously stated conditions and comments by reviewing departments.
Thanks, you do. Do we have a second?
I will second that, Mr. Chair. I do have a comment that I want to make before we go into the vote, though.
Go ahead, sir.
I, since everything that we're saying is recorded, I just want to make sure that we have on the record that Ms. Bergens' title is the Clerk Treasurer, not Clerk, Clerk Recorder, so. I just, yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that was on the record, but anyway.
Thank you.
Otherwise, I have no other objections to this.
All right. And we've already opened this for public comment, I believe. So we have a motion.
In a second.
In a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item number two, for possible action, discussion to fill a vacancy on the Gardinerville Town Advisory Board in accordance with County Code 18 dot 06 dot 040 and NRS 245 dot 170. The Gardinerville Town Advisory Board has recommended Dan Hammer to fill the unexpired term of Mike Henningson. The appointee will serve the remaining unexpired term of August the 15th, 2024, through December 31st, 2026, and the town manager, Eric Nielsen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm here today due to the unfortunate circumstances. Mike Henningson resigned as town board member on May 16th and subsequently passed away on July 14th. He served a term and a half on the town board, and as mentioned by the chair, we're asking the county commission to fill the vacancy until December 31st, 2026. I just want the board to know, and the members here on the record, that Mike's, Mike's hobby, Mike's joy, was serving in the community. He served on the Minnengardenville Sanitation Board for years. He was very active in Kiwanis. He, longtime, served and was fiercely dedicated to Trinity Lutheran Church and served as a scout master. And his big hobby and big passion was serving on the Douglas County Historical Society. I think it was his great-grandfather who founded the Henningson Ranch in the 1870s, and Mike was a 1974 graduate of Douglas County High School. So we will miss Mike, but we are, we are needing to get our board back to five members. The county, the town board advertised, and the Record Courier on our Facebook page, they also had a banner on the town website soliciting applicants for the town board. We gave approximately six weeks, I believe, for anyone to apply. We did have three applications. The town board invited those people to come and appear before the town board to discuss how they would fit with the town board at our August 6th board meeting. Three people applied, Julie Duda, Julie McCain, and Dan Hamer. The town board recommended 4-0 that Dan Hamer fill the vacancy. Dan Hamer is here today in the audience if the county commission has any questions of him. Ms. McCain told me that she wasn't going to be able to make it today due to a previously scheduled appointment, and I don't see Ms. Duda here, but not to say she isn't here, I just haven't seen her. Again, the county commission has ultimate flexibility to appoint, to follow the town's recommendation, appoint a different member, appoint someone who has not been considered. But with that, I can take any questions, or if the board has any questions of Mr. Hamer, he's here as well.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board? Commissioner.
I don't really have a question, but I would really like to invite Dan Hamer to make a short to the podium and just very briefly tell us about his interest in serving
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Dan Hamer for the record. I'm a longtime Valley resident. I love giving back to the community. I love serving the community. I've had the good fortune to work for the county for nearly 20 years now. I went through the process just to ensure that I had both my chief's approval to pursue this. this position, and I also reached out to the DA's office just to confirm that there was no perceived conflict. I've served on the Regional Transportation Commission with Mr. Rice previously. I've been a long-term Kiwanian for about 13 and a half years and currently in the president-elect. I love this community, and I love having my family raised here. I was raised here. I want to serve Gardinerville. I was humbled by the decision of their board and hopeful to just be someone who's solution-oriented and listens to its constituents.
Thank you.
There any more questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, this is for possible action. So we will open it to a public comment? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the board for a motion.
I move that we approve Dan Hamer to fill the unexpired term of Mike Henningson.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes five oh. That brings us to item number three. For possible action, discussion on the adoption of ordinance 2024 dash 1641, an ordinance amending provisions of Chapter 10 dot 08 of the Douglas County Code relating to traffic control devices to restrict the passage of trucks on the portion of Johnson Lane from Nye Drive to the eastern terminus of Johnson Lane. This item is proposed to protect the safety of the current users of the aforementioned roadway, to provide the health and safety of the residents adjacent to the roadway, to prevent an increase in the depreciation and wear on the roadway, and otherwise help preserve this section of the road. This is a second reading. Mr. Morgan.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes, sir.
I, I know that we've just been in the meeting for a half hour, but we, we did have a meeting in advance of this, and I, I, I think that members of this board may need to use the facilities prior to us getting in. This is going to be a long item, and I anticipate, so I would ask for it, we take maybe a 10-minute break until maybe a quarter to 11:00, so that we can come back and pay our full attentions to this item.
All right, we will take a break until quarter till 11:00, and thank you, Mr. Scott, or Scott, uh, Mr. Morgan, for stepping down for just a minute.
All right, I'll call the meeting back to order, and I believe we left off with Mr. Scott Morgan.
Mr. Chairman, members of the County Board of Commission, Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager for Douglas County. Today, I am here to present the second reading of ordinance 2024-1641, an ordinance amending the provisions of Chapter 10.08 of Douglas County Code. This action restricts truck traffic on Johnson Lane from Nye Drive to the eastern terminus of Johnson Lane. Before I proceed any more, I want to just draw attention kind of to the location of this particular action. You can see the no trucks kind of in the center of the screen in relationship to the proposed Painted Rock Mine and along Johnson Lane. And just to give people watching at home and those in the audience kind of perspective of the area we are specifically talking about in this ordinance, I'm also going to then scroll down and zoom in on this particular location. Specifically what this ordinance contemplates is restricting truck traffic in the red circled area from Nye Drive to the terminus. You'll see that there are a couple of residents along that road, and you'll also see a very popular OHV staging area, whether it be official or unofficial, at the terminus of that location. So, a little background on this, Douglas County, the County Board of Commissioners have been deliberating on this particular matter since September of 2020. This action is intended to reduce future wear and tear on Johnson Lane and address concerns raised by county residents in proximity to this particular location. This action prioritizes public safety on our public streets as it has been determined that some of the uses in this location are recreational, whether they be pedestrian or equestrian. It also is intended to protect the public safety of adjacent residential properties on Johnson Lane. It is also basing its conclusion on the draft EA document, Environmental Assessment, from March 2024, where the assessment has asserted that up to 500,000 tons per year with a range of 1,000 to 2,000 tons per day of material will be hauled on Johnson Lane Road. It also contemplates that a maximum of 170 individual truck trips per day will be utilized if this project goes forward on this particular section of road. The Painted Rock Mine draft EA acknowledges this heavy truck traffic equipment and that this heavy truck traffic will also deteriorate the surface of Douglas County roads over the 20-year period. The draft EA also recognizes that a decrease in the remaining life of the pavement on these sections of Johnson Lane Road would require additional maintenance on the road surface sooner than otherwise would be accomplished. This would also divert very valuable and precious funds from other important road maintenance projects in Douglas County. This action protects the safety of the current users on Johnson Lane Road and the health and safety of the residents that are adjacent to Johnson Lane Road. It preserves the roadway asset as the board deems this necessary. I am available for any questions if you have them.
Thank you, sir. Something tells me this is not going to be short and sweet, so don't get too comfortable. And I think what I will, well, I will start with Commissioner Hales and then work my way down to Commissioner Gardner. Commissioner Hales?
I'm looking at the cars on the far right, just below the word "private." And I think you briefly mentioned those are there for recreational purposes. Could you, and I know you used the acronym OHV, could you just elaborate about that?
Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager, Douglas County. My apologies, Commissioner Hales, for using the acronym. OHV is Off-Highway Vehicle, the acronym for that. And those people staging in that area are recreational enthusiasts, whether they're equestrian, pedestrian, mountain bikers, or motorized, whether they be quads, side-by-sides, or motorcycles staging in that area to access the federal land that the terminus of Johnson Lane is adjacent to.
I see a bunch of trails going to the north and the east from that, where it says "private."
Yes, I just changed the screen to where now kind of right below the no trucks, and you can see the spider web of either authorized BLM, Bureau of Land Management, trails, or unauthorized trails in that area.
So, are you, is it your understanding that that area is frequently and widely used by all the categories you mentioned, pedestrians, equestrians, hikers, road bikes, and off-highway vehicles?
Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager, Douglas County. It is my understanding, as well as my personal understanding of that area, that it is a very popular access point for both residents and visitors from the state of Nevada and outside the state of Nevada. It would be one of the more popular recreational federal land access sites in Douglas County.
And then can you go back to the next one? It's, do people in those residents that we're seeing and maybe in the surrounding community there sometimes just bike right on the road to get out to those hills?
Commissioner Hales, yes. It is my understanding, as well as my personal experience witnessing, that many people rode their vehicles rather than trailer their vehicles. If you live in that neighborhood to either on the pavement surfaces or in the right-of-way, ride their horses, motorized vehicles, and bicycles.
And I personally have been in that area, and I have seen kids on bikes going from neighborhoods to the trails. And is that your experience too, or understanding that even children under the age of 18 use the roads for that purpose?
Yes, I do not have a percentage of what that usage is, but it is also my personal experience that I have witnessed miners, people under the age of 18, utilizing that corridor, whether on pavement or in right-of-way, accessing the federal land from the neighborhood.
Thank you. And then I would like to ask a little more deeply about our concerns about the road and the maintenance of the road. It's my understanding that the estimations from the EA are that the truck use as anticipated would cut the life of the road basically in half.
I don't know specifically if it cuts it in half, but it does reduce the life of, the normal life of the road and deteriorate its surface beyond what it normally has. We have County Manager Jennifer Davidson up here who maybe can speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vice Chair Hales, members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager for the record. I am more familiar with your question because I did have the benefit of drafting the resolution expressing the county's opposition to this project and did spend quite a significant amount of time reviewing this section of the EA. It's my understanding that this section of road, if heavy truck traffic were permitted, the useful life of the road would be reduced by 10 years. So, current estimates of the useful life of that road is 30 years, so it would be reduced from 30 to 20.
And could you just, since becoming a commissioner, I've become aware of how the need for road maintenance is not matched by the resources that we have for road maintenance countywide. Is this something that weighs on your mind as County Manager?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager for the record. Yes, county resources at this time are stretched very thin. We've had significant conversations with our traffic engineer regarding our CIP and our ability to keep up with road maintenance, and we're currently unable to meet the needs of Douglas County on a lot of our roads. We don't have enough funding to do everything on our list, so this is a significant concern for us.
And to repair a road because of heavy truck use would be a very expensive type of road maintenance? Is that accurate?
Madam Vice Chair, members of the Commission, unfortunately, I wouldn't be able to speak to that. I don't know if it, if heavy trucks, the extent of the damage on the road versus regular truck traffic.
Okay. But we do know that it would take from resources from other roads that also need maintenance in our county?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for letting me just dig a little deeper on those two points.
Chairman Rice, if I may specifically read from the record into the record from the environmental document which addressed that life of the road, if you would indulge that. Specifically, the environmental assessment stated, "The analysis found that the increase of traffic would decrease the remaining life of the pavement between East Valley Road and Johnson Lane off-highway vehicle area segmented by approximately 18.8 years from 33.9 years to 15.1 years."
I think that's where I got the half. That's why I was thinking half. So, apparently, it's a little nebulous exactly how much, but it's clearly established in the EA that it would have a significant financial impact on our ability to maintain roads, including that one. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Noah said. Commissioner Tarkanian.
I just have a few dealing, I'm dealing with the environment assessment. The county was part of, agreed to be a cooperating agency?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, yes, we did agree to be a cooperating agency.
Do the county have the ability to pick which experts were going to make the conclusions in the EA report?
We did not select the experts. However, we did weigh in on their qualifications to complete this work.
So, who selected the experts?
I believe BIA selected the experts.
Who paid for the experts?
I believe BIA paid for the experts.
So, I had a couple of questions concerning their conclusions. First of all, dealing with, I mean, I was at the meeting that they spoke at the community center and went through all of these things, and I found it very hard to listen to. First of all, they said that the home prices weren't going to drop very much by the basis of 170 trucks driving up and down the residential neighborhood there. Are you aware of how the BIA, how the experts came to the conclusion of the home prices not dropping very much?
Yes, if I may, Commissioner Tarkanian. Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager, Douglas County. We did review the draft EIA and commented on several sections within the document. One of the sections we did make comment to was on the impacts on local housing values, and we believe that the environmental assessment was flawed in their regard, using examples of mining and aggregate operations in communities that existed prior to home development, and that they did not adequately share accurate information that analyzed the effects of a mining operation or aggregate operation moving into an existing neighborhood. Part of our assessment were that when home development occurred around these types of operations, that land values were already reduced and therefore could only increase from a reduced base state. And we believe the environmental document did not assess the impact on home values where home values preexisted prior to a mining or aggregate operation.
Okay, so I'm going to try to just repeat this, and you tell me if I'm correct, because I want to make sure the record is real clear and straight. You could use words that are much bigger than my vocabulary. So, the EA analyzed the home values of homes such as near Bing that were built after Bing was in operation. And they said that those home values did not decrease from the mining operation. Well, how would it decrease if they already was in operation when they originally bought it? This is a different situation in that these homeowners' homes are already there, and the mining operation has not started. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe you have accurately summarized my statement and the comments that Douglas County has made to the draft environmental assessment.
Did the EA change after the county made those comments?
It is my understanding it has not.
Did, you said the county made several comments. Did the EA change after any of our comments?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, Mr. Tarkanian, directly to your question, our comments on multiple chapters of the draft EA, over the course of a year's worth of reviewing and working to review these documents, I do think that some of the sections of the EA were revised in response to our comments, but not all. I'm sorry if that didn't answer your-
I just wanted to see how much of a cooperating impact that we had. I mean, I would think that it would be pretty understandable that the home prices would, look, if you live next to an airport, or somebody builds an airport after you bought a home there, your home prices are going to go down because nobody wants to hear that noise. That's, that's, I mean, there's a thing called judicial notice. I couldn't remember what it was, but that's where the judge doesn't even request evidence to support something because the public knows it's true. Well, it's common knowledge that if you're going to buy a home and they build an airport right next to you, your home prices are going to go down, and I think the same would be true if you got 170 heavy trucks driving down in front of your home too. So, my question is, they didn't change the EA conclusion that the home prices would drop, even though the county has a cooperative agency ask them to? How much of an impact did the county have with their being a cooperative agency? I mean, how much did they change based upon the concerns that we had?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I believe our impact was that we expressed our concerns. They acknowledged them and said that they didn't have a comparable example to compare this to, so this is, this is the conclusion they reached. There was no change to their conclusion as a result of our comment.
So, let me get to the next one of my concern, and then I'll pass it on to after-public comment. With respect, the EA said there would be very little impact to public safety by the operation of this mine. And they came to that conclusion based upon an analysis of the traffic trips by trucks on Johnson Lane primarily east of, west of Vicki Lane, correct? And they, well, let me just finish. So, they took analysis of how many trucks, what ratio of trucks were driving west of Vicki Lane, and used that analysis, using the same percentage of trucks east of Vicki Lane, to determine that there would be very little public safety impact. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, my understanding, after conferring with Douglas County's traffic engineer, John Urb, because there is not a commercial truck traffic operation on the section east of Vicki Lane today, that the data being reviewed was based on commercial truck traffic at other locations, including truck traffic west of Vicki Lane.
Exactly. And in fact, that's what was addressed to us earlier today. So, my, I guess, so this leads to the point that I've had a contentious with Mr. Ermon in the past. I don't believe all roads are the same, and I don't believe all parts of a road are the same. For example, Johnson Lane in itself, it's a collector road, if I got this right, and this is the area that I have. It's a major collector road up to Hayborn. It's a minor collector road up to Fremont, and then afterwards is not designated as any collector road. And that's because the road changes in those different areas. And anyways, and that's because the road changes in those different areas. So, I believe the EA is flawed when they say, hey, we're going to, we're going to analyze the truck traffic and the impact it has on public safety in a, on the collector road next to an industrial area where there aren't that many homes fronting Vicki Lane, and use that same analysis east of Vicki Lane, or even more so, east of Nye Road, in making a determination that all the roads are not the same, and even some of the roads change in different areas. The second problem I have with that is, and which was confirmed to us today too, the EA used the ratio of just trucks by itself, not heavy-duty trucks, not trucks carrying tons of material. They just use any truck. So, they counted a post office truck driving down, they're going to count that as the same as one of these 170 trucks coming from the Painted Rock Mine that are carrying between 1,000 and 2,000 tons of gravel every day. All the trucks aren't the same. And it's my understanding, from hearing the discussion on the EA, that it's not going to be just any regular trucks. There could be two and three trailers full of rocks on leaving and coming into, leaving Painted Rock Mine. So, if that's the case, if that's the case, how does the EA come up with a reasonable conclusion that there isn't going to be a risk to the public by analyzing sentrous trucks or post office trucks and comparing that to the heavy-duty trucks going through residential neighborhoods? Not much of a question, more of a statement. I don't have much else to say, I'll turn it over.
Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I wanted to, I think certainly the concept of cooperating agency. I think that we as a board, and I think members of the public misunderstand that term, okay? I certainly know I did. And when you become a, you know, assign a document or become a cooperating agency, can you give us a clear definition of what a cooperating agency is?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, Douglas County Manager. Without having the cooperating agency memorandum, I think it was an MOU, in front of me, I would describe it as it's an invitation to participate in the process. I served as a liaison, along with John Urb, to what I would describe as a group that was pulled together to work on this EA. There was representation from BIA, BLM, Douglas County, and the various experts that participated, as well as the EA consultants that were drafting the agreement. It provided the county the opportunity for us to express our concerns and to make sure that the interests of our residents and the board's constituents were being heard as part of this process and to raise any objections that we may have.
Okay. So, technically, it's not necessarily, when you use that term cooperating, it generally gives a connotation of agreement. However, we're, just because we are a cooperating agency doesn't necessarily mean that we're in agreement with the process or the results. It's simply allowing us, as I understand it, to submit comments and concerns, right? Is that, is that a good understanding?
I think that's fair, Commissioner Gardner. I would say that our role in this process was to ensure that the EA wasn't considered in a vacuum and that those participating in this conversation are considered as complete of a context as possible in their decision-making.
So, if we hadn't become a cooperating agency, we really wouldn't have had a voice in the whole process? Is that the simple way of putting it?
Yes, sir, I would agree with that statement.
Okay. This, you know, and as I understand it, BIA and the Bureau of Indian Affairs and the Bureau of Land Management, two different organizations, separate charges, have both issued a finding of no FONC, okay? And for those who need to know what that means, a finding of no significant impact, correct?
BIA has issued the finding of no significant impact. BLMs issued a decision regarding whether or not they would allow their property to be utilized for access. So, their decision is more relative to a permitting standpoint. They don't issue the FONC.
Okay.
I don't believe they do.
Thank you for that clarification. I wasn't aware of that.
Yes.
Okay. So, and you've already indicated, you know, I think some of the questions, Commissioner Tarkanian was reading my notes, but.
I did, actually.
So, if we had had subject matter experts available to us, is that something that we would have been allowed to use and submit to BLM or BIA? I don't know that we have those subject matter experts, and I don't know that we have the money to necessarily fund that, but if we- have the money to necessarily fund that, but if we, could we, could we use our own subject-mattered experts to basically dispute what, what BLM and BIA have come to the conclusion of?
Yes, we could have hired our own separate experts.
Oh, okay. And the other question is, do we have any opportunity, I know the EA has been a direct, the draft EA, right? It's not a, it's not the final EA, but it's a draft EA. Do we have any opportunity as a county to dispute that EA?
Yes, there is an appeal period from the date of the issuance, and I do believe it is expiring very, very soon.
Have we drafted that, and could we still submit that to, I guess, would it be BIA and BLM, or just BIA?
Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you so much. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. Just to remind the board and the public, this is, this item is about road, road restrictions. Although there's a lot of data that, that kind of was the impetus for the board and staff to look at the impacts on this road, this item is not about the EA process, the, the permits issued either by BLM or BIA. It's about traffic controls on this section of the road, of Johnson Lane. Now, I understand, and it's understandable, that a lot of the data has come forward because of this permitting process, the EA, the data that has been revealed because of that has revealed some problems with potential use of the road in the future. But this agenda item is about road restrictions generally, not a specific company or permit. It's about any use of heavy roads in this area.
Yeah, but we're, we're here because of, I mean, why do you think the room's filled up? They're here because there's a concern for heavy trucks going through that residential neighborhood, and they can go through there once the EA is, time limit has ended. And we have to address that, and that's why we are addressing it with this road issue. This is all relevant to, to the agenda, agendaized item.
Thank you, Doug Ritchie again. Again, this is not about the permit, whether it should be issued, or even the EA process. It's about, and I understand that this process has revealed information, data, that is a concern to the board and to members of the public regarding the use of this road. Simply stated, any heavy truck, whether it's Knox or anybody else that's using this section of road, this data has revealed concerns that the board may or may not address today through the regulation of this section of road. Again, there's a lot of discussion, there's been a lot of discussion about the permitting process, the county's role as a cooperating agency. However, this agenda item is about restricting the road for public health and safety issues as well as the cost to maintain this road if heavy trucks, any heavy trucks occur. Again, in deference to Commissioner Tarkanian, I understand what you're saying. But what I'm saying is, this information, this permitting process, has brought to light problems that this agenda item may address.
I appreciate what you just. I, I think what you're saying is, is well-taken by this board, because what we're trying to do is address the health and safety issues of the residents in this area and whether or not we should allow any truck traffic, regardless of the purveyor on that. Is that, is that what we're discussing today?
Chairman, if I may, Doug Ritchie with the DA's office again. That is absolutely correct. This is not about whether a permit should be issued by BIA or BLM. It's about information that has come to light regarding the safety of heavy truck traffic in this area by anyone.
Right. And, and by doing so, we also have, if there's other areas of our county that we identify could have similar impacts, then we have the authority as a board to make similar restrictions on those roads as well throughout the county. Is that right? That, that, that belongs to the authority of this board, as I understand it, through, through the ordinance process?
Doug Ritchie again, for the record. That is correct. This, the Board of County Commissioners is generally charged with the public health and safety, and specifically for roads that our county maintains.
Well, I think that, to me, seems to be the underlying concern and, and bottom lining it. So it, it, it has nothing to do, in my mind, with the maintenance of that road, the conditions of that road, how long they, you know, other than, other than our residents also have a right to use our roads without further deterioration, I suppose. Right? Because that does lend to the health and safety and their, and their ability to traverse those roads. We have a lot of roads within our county that, quite frankly, through wear and tear and, and the lack of resources, as Commissioner Hales has pointed out, to ensure the health and safety of our residents. And I think that's certainly the primary, one of the primary responsibilities of this board. So anyways, I, I don't think I have any other questions at this time, then. Commissioner Hales, you wanted to?
Commissioner Hill.
I'm not quite clear what you just said, but the title of the agenda item says that this ordinance is bringing, being proposed in part to prevent an increase in the depreciation and wear on the roadway. And we actually have a lot of information about that presented in the EA. And I believe, Commissioner Gardner, that you would agree that one of the reasons to propose this ordinance would be that, so that we don't have to divert a lot of money from our road maintenance fund to maintain that road because of heavier truck traffic.
I don't disagree with you, but once again, it, it also lends to the health and safety of our residents.
Both.
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 I agree.
Good. We're together.
Okay.
Now that we've settled that, is there any further comments from the board? It's time for public comment. Before we start public comment, I would ask you to remember that you have three minutes. If the person in front of you says the same thing you want to say, feel free to say ditto and walk away. At three minutes versus this crowd, we're going to be here for a while, so if we're still going at 12:30, we will be taking a lunch break, and then we will continue where we left off. So having said that, public comment is now open. Please state your name and write your name in the book.
Carol Straele. Commissioner Tarkanian, you were asking earlier about property values and whatnot. I can guarantee you, after working for one of the largest real estate lenders in California for 20 years, that yes, and working with our appraisers, yes, property values will drop. But I will give you a current example. We have an empty lot next door that's going to be impacted, obviously, along with us. And the, the woman and her husband, they've been trying to sell it for the last six months at least. The sellers have been open and honest with prospective buyers wanting to buy, and they've been telling them about the prospective mine. And unfortunately, they have not been able to sell that lot. So, I mean, right then and there, we live in a neighborhood that is very desirable, and that lot should have been sold a long time ago. But because of the prospective mine and the trucks going behind us, she has not been able to sell. And that's, and besides the health hazards from all of it. It, it is, it's true. Property values will drop.
Thank you. Next.
My house, I signed it. Ron Conway. I live at the end of Johnson Lane. My house is the one that has the map that said, the sign that says Stop Painted Rock Mine, which is probably going to change to save Johnson Lane. I'm the resident that brought the map originally, the NDOT map, that showed what is what in the county. I want to tie, I am welcome the truck restrictions on Nye. First, let me say, I'm going to speak on stuff that I know. I am an absolute expert. I was a manager at the largest hard rock quarry west of the Mississippi. I was an owner-operator of a dirt, rock, sand, and gravel truck, and I have a paving contractor's license in California. So I know what is going to happen to the road, the safety of the person, people who live on the road. I'm sorry, I get excited. I'm not much on public speaking. I don't like standing up here. My question is, why Nye? Why are we starting at Nye? Why are we not starting at Vicky, where the speed limit changes, the residents are, and the most potential for safety concerns? You have 70-some driveways that back out onto Johnson Lane at that particular spot. Why are we starting at Nye? Why are we not starting where the speed limit changes? If you don't start there, you leave open the left turn and right turn. If you start at Nye, you leave open a right turn at Fremont to go down to East Valley and turn and go up Sunrise Pass. You make up, you leave open a left turn at East Valley to go over to Stephanie and go that direction. I don't understand why we're not stopping this where it needs to be stopped. I want to understand what's going to happen at 395 and Johnson Lane with 100,000-pound-plus truck stopping in the dead of the heat of the summer? What's going to happen to that asphalt? What's going to happen if that driver goes a little too fast? What kind of disaster is going to end up on 395? I welcome you to go sit across the highway and watch the trucks that come out of Starbucks try to make that. They can't. They do it, but they can't. To Tarkanian, it has already affected housing. One of my neighbors took his house off the market because the one potential buyer didn't want to buy it because of the quarry. You asked about how long the asphalt's going to last. The only one that can tell you that, anyone tries to tell you that is blowing smoke. Mother Nature, rain, snow, and heat affect asphalt. You put 100,000-plus-ton truck on that? 100,000? Okay.
Good morning, Mary Ann Park, Douglas County. I want you all to realize what's happening here. They are taking a piecemeal amendment to the transportation plan to a very small segment of road, and they are changing vested property rights for the people who live and own property at the end of that road. And right now, you all think that's a great thing because it's going to help you. But the property owner, well, I'm talking to everyone because this is a community issue. And what this really is, is it the de facto mining moratorium. Let's call a spade a spade. What are the chances that they're going to re-categorize a very small segment of the road when there's no transportation plan being considered? You don't care because it's not happening to your houses, but what about the mineral owners? And the fact that it's happening to Indian land is particularly offensive. But let's say, let's talk about what's actually happening. This is a Fifth Amendment property taking. The mineral owners are being deprived of their property rights. At common law, the mineral estate is dominant. Your counsel has not corrected the record when your commissioner has made a blatant legal error. No, property values are not a proper subject of judicial notice. You are dead wrong on that. But what I can tell you is that there's a U.S. Supreme Court case, Nick v. Township of Scott, Pennsylvania, where the Supreme Court ruled that local governments are subject to Section 1983 lawsuits in federal court for inverse condemnation. The Nevada Supreme Court upheld that ruling in McCarran International Airport v. Sicilac. Again, Fifth Amendment constitutional takings can be brought directly to federal court, which is exactly what the mineral owners and the BIA and everybody else with vested property rights is going to do if you pass this ordinance. And guess what? That won't be in front of your friend Judge Young, who you've got your thumb on for a $65 million Justice Center. Oh, no, it will be a real judge in federal court who knows the Constitution inside and out and doesn't give a whip about your Justice Center. They will hold you to the Fifth Amendment. This will cost taxpayers multiple millions of dollars to undo the very foolish decision that's before you. Your counsel and your county manager didn't even have the common sense to hide this within a larger transportation plan amendment. Shame on all of you.
Please hold your comments.
What's your name?
Mary Ann Park.
Mary Ann, did you sign in? Okay, you did.
Sure did.
So, Mary Ann, I'm Stacy Clark, and I'm just a common resident here in Johnson Lane area. I live off Sunrise Pass. But I happen to be a retired scientist, in particular, a discovery toxicologist. And yes, this can go to federal court. And it can also be amended to say, hey, under the framework, which I'm looking at right now for all of us to see, the state, local, tribal air toxics reduction program under the Clean Air Act Advisory Committee specifically states, regardless if it's on BIA land, regardless if it's on public land, that you cannot violate the Clean Air Act. And in the soil samples that were taken on the project, there are numerous hazardous assessed, or hazardous air pollutants, HAPs, including cobalt, including arsenic, including cadmium, including beryllium. And that stuff is going to blow every afternoon throughout our community. Not the two miles, not the 148 acres that Knox wants to mine. I have no problem with capitalism. I have no problem with someone going, hey, we have a need for local gravel, but not at the cost of our safety, not at the cost of our air pollutants. And this road has fugitive dust. This road that we're talking about restricting needs to also include Fremont. It needs to include Sunrise Pass, because those roads are also going to have fugitive dust, not only from the diesel, not only from the tires, which are also considered HAPs, hazardous air pollutants, but the loads that they're carrying. Furthermore, the risk reduction program that this study, which was poorly designed, because it took a 24-hour average of what particulates are going to be in the air, we all know the wind blows like crazy in the afternoon. We all know, some days it's better, some days it's worse. We all see dust devils across the valley coming up to Johnson. We know that this stuff is heavy metals, cadmium. It's going to land on alfalfa, the cow's, it's going to land on the soils that we grow our vegetables in. It's going to land, it's going to be on our skin. It's more than just, oh, the, the off-roaders blowing stuff in the, in the wind. It's a mine that will be for a 25-year lease plus 10 years. This is a huge Clean Air Act violation and including this little segment of road, period. It's not worth this fight. Please include Fremont, please include Sunrise. The fugitive dust on those roads alone is considered an HAP, and we don't want it. We don't want it in this location. It might be needed, but not here.
Could you state your name again? You'd sent me an email, and I can't find it.
Yes. Stacy Clark, retired scientist. My husband's a veterinarian, and we own Medicine Horse Ranch off Sunrise Pass, and this is our retirement dream, and we don't want to be breathing this stuff. Thank you. I'm happy to talk with anybody who wants to talk to me. I've spent days going over NRS, going over the Clean Air Act. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I don't have any statistics to share. I just have personal.
You can get a little closer to your microphone, please.
Sorry. Like I said, I don't have any statistics. I'm not a scientist. I am a retired person living right off of Johnson Avenue. And I do agree with the gentleman here that says, why not start fixing the road all the way back to Vicki? I am sort of in between Vicki and Nye. I live on Gordon Avenue, which is sort of in the middle. I'm about a half a block off of Johnson Lane. So I just want to share my personal experience with the roads. I'm part of a dog walking group in Johnson Lane area. And every day, we go out just walking our dogs. And we see the deterioration of the roads. I mean, we are walking on the roads. The edges of the roads are crumbling. They're deteriorating. I have a small dog. I have to watch out so that he doesn't trip, you know, on the, on the potholes and all the other mess that is part of the road. Johnson Lane, we try to avoid it. There are times where we'll have to, you know, take a block down Johnson Lane because not only of the, the traffic and they're, the dust that's brought up just from the regular traffic that we have right now, but the rocks and, and its craziness. I drive down Johnson Lane, off of Gordon, down Johnson Lane to East Valley to do my chores in Gardinerville. And the traffic, since I've moved out here seven years ago, has increased tremendously, just the normal traffic with all the new homes, all the stuff that's going on out there. And so the roads are deteriorating just from normal traffic. Adding 170 trucks, oh my gosh. I couldn't even imagine. This is a two-lane highway. There are no sidewalks, very rural. You know, I can't walk on a sidewalk out there. I have to walk on the road. So this is what, just as a personal experience that I wanted to share with you. And the idea of these trucks, it's just, I couldn't even imagine with the damage, not only to me, but public safety. Thank you.
Jim Jackson. I will try to maintain my composure, but it's very difficult when we have people in the audience and come up here and threaten you and threaten us residents with lawsuits shows their total disregard and disrespect for the residents of this community. They should not be allowed anywhere near any decision that's made for us. It goes to show that all they care about is money in their pocket, no matter what it causes to the rest of us. You are our defense against that. We can't do it on our own, but you can. And to listen to these harebrained, can't say what I'm really thinking, but it goes along with the same thing when we heard all of these studies, these outcome-based studies that were presented to us that said no impact whatsoever. It's outcome impact or outcome-based. They wanted to have this. Well, we're not telling them they can't have the Painted Rock Mine. That's not our jurisdiction. We're just saying, don't drive down our roads and destroy our residential areas and cause health problems for our people that live in this area and eventually kill somebody. It will happen. I almost got run over by a triple the other day going down Johnson Lane. He was going a little bit faster than the 25 miles an hour that he should have been going and stuff. But they're going to do that. And come winter, it's going to be even worse when that road ice is over. We slide all over the place up there right now. And if you can't protect us from that, then you don't deserve to be sitting on this board. We put you there to protect us, and we expect you to do that. And this is a good example of why. And like you said, we're not trying to center any one company. But that company should have a little bit more respect for us and the effects it's going to have on us, on the financial effects and on the health effects. And there will be many of them. So hopefully you will do the right thing for us. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Nick Harvey. I'm a Johnson Lane resident. I live on Downs Drive. You're going to hear from a lot of Johnson Lane people that are not for the Painted Rock Mine and for this, basically for this road to be shut down to trucking. I personally, I, you know, I live in that community, but I believe that what you commissioners are trying to do by instituting an ordinance, ordinance to shut down truck traffic on a very small section of road is very unfair in the sense of you are trying to target and stop one thing from happening by just affecting one section of road. I also believe that our county really desperately needs a, a rock plant. Once Bing is closed, all construction, like rock that is brought into this valley is now coming from Mound House and Carson. It has added substantial cost to everyone who's trying to redo their gravel driveway, right? Put landscape rock down to basically all of our road maintenance that we have to do. All that, all that material is now coming into the county from outside. So I truly believe that it's something we need in this county. And I just wanted to voice my opinion, being a Johnson Lane resident, that I think what you're doing is going to open up the county to a lawsuit, which is going to cost the county a ton of money. And I really don't think you're going to win because you're specifically targeting a small section of road that is trying to basically stop one project from happening. And by doing that, you also have a number of private residents that live, that have property out off of Sunrise Pass Road and out of Johnson Lane. There are private land spots all over the place that use that as access. Somebody wants to go build a house out there now on those, on those properties? How are they going to be able to get any material to build a house? They can't bring a truck out there, bring in any base, any concrete, any aggregate. So you're now limiting all of those people that have private property out there. So I think that's something you have to account for as well. So thank you for your time.
Carol Strail again. I just want to make one point regarding the health and the health hazard to all of the possibility of all these trucks. I have said it before in written letters to you guys regarding the disease that I had many years ago before I moved here called sarcoidosis, which my pulmonologist stated was caused by large truck tire dust and exhaust. Now, this disease attaches itself to the organs in the body. It attached it to my lungs at the time, and I had to have open lung biopsy surgery.
I'm terribly sorry.
I'm sorry, what?
You already spoke once. Unfortunately, we don't allow two bites out of the apple.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll just say, you don't want to get the disease, but it's possible. Thank you.
Charlotte Ursick. First off, I want to thank all of you commissioners for your diligence since 2000. Charlotte Ursick. I know most of you and have talked personally with most of you. I want to thank you for your diligence. I happen to have moved to the Johnson Lane area because it was quiet. It was peaceful. And we didn't have the big trucks. I knew we had trucks in the industrial area and up to claphams, but we don't need the trucks in a residential area where there's children, animals, school buses, et cetera, that are picking up children. Again, just please bear in mind that we do have a lot of people walking in that area and a lot of children playing in the street. Thank you.
Jim Robinson. I am one of the owners of Knox Excavating. We are a small local business that has been operated here in the Carson Valley since 1994. I am proud to say I've called Douglas County my home for over 30 years. Knox Excavating employs many local residents and continuously supports local programs in the valley, including Little League, high school basketball, volleyball, 2030 Club, rodeo, et cetera. We are an active member in this community at all times. When it comes to Painted Rock Mine, it seems the main complaint is the fact that Johnson Lane is the haul route. In Douglas County, 2017 master plan, they clearly named Johnson Lane as a major collector. It only takes one drive down Johnson Lane to realize why the county did that. Why is it okay for Starbucks, UPS, and Tesla to send countless trucks down Johnson Lane when my small business cannot? Is the public aware that the state of Nevada has an active mining lease at the end of Johnson Lane directly behind the Skyline Ranch subdivision? The Nevada Department of Transportation can lawfully haul material out of that pit whenever they choose. That pit is located directly behind the homes at Skyline Ranch. The exemption in the ordinance that allows NDOT to continue using Johnson Lane as a haul route underlines the discriminatory nature of this ordinance. Enacting this ordinance would remove Knox's ability to use the last section of Johnson Lane. It specifically discriminates against our company and would destroy the economic value of the lease. I would like to read from Douglas County's website under frequently asked questions about Painted Rock Mine. This is from the county. You guys wrote this. What can the county be done to fight the project? Can trucks from the project be banned from Johnson Lane or other roads? Can a gate be put up at the end of Johnson Lane? This is the county's response. Johnson Lane is a major connector designed for truck traffic. Historically, Johnson Lane, as it is adjacent to industrial areas along most of its length, already sees routine truck traffic in numbers significantly higher than those proposed by this project. Any action taken by the county to prevent this project from operating on public roads would be challenged by the BIA. There is not a legal defensible case to single out this one operation and ban or limit their use of Johnson Lane. Thank you.
John Maxwell. I'm the other Jim's partner in Knox Excavating. I don't have anything written down. I've got some bullet points here, and I've got three minutes to defend a literal attack on my livelihood and real harm to my business. I came to the county in early 2020, three months before this came before the board. I met with staff. I brought with me a good faith offer to share in the proceeds of the sales of this pit in order to fund a maintenance agreement solely for Johnson Lane. Doug, in the last minutes of that, it took three months to get in front of the board, and we had a couple of days to get this ironed out. I met with Doug. We worked hard. He, he worked hard for you guys. He came away with that agreement that, a lot of concessions. And you can shake your head, but that's the truth. And the very next moment, the very next item, you guys voted to comment. In that comment letter, Patrick Gates demanded the BIA not allow us to use the lease, and if they did, we would have to build a road north and south into Carson into 50 or south to town to 395. That's an instant breach of contract. You don't make an agreement and then deny the use of the road in that agreement. Okay? So that's the reason that all fell apart. And that's the truth. It hasn't been spoken of in any of these meetings. And I'd like to address the, the life of the road. That last section, it's a little, it's, and I don't know if this is purposeful, but you keep saying it's going to be 15 and a half years. That road is built, the full life of that road, even with our trucks on it or client trucks, would be 37 and a half years. The standard life of a road is expected to be 20 years. So even with the increased traffic, you're getting nearly the double lifespan that's required by any road. Okay? So like, the way things are presented, it inflames you guys, right? You guys are talking about particulates that cause harm, right? It's all, they're all valid concerns. That's why we had spent hundreds of thousands of dollars over the four years studying your guys' concerns. And at the end of the, end of the day, we get a road closed on us, or at least an ordinance proposed, you guys were a cooperating agency. You had, every, every chapter was read, addressed, and you had every opportunity to challenge that chapter before it moved on. You agreed that the chapter was finished, moved on to the next portion. That's the process. Right? So this, this, I can't believe I'm standing up here and I'm running out of time to try and defend my right to use a public road that I've paid for. It's, it's disingenuous at best. Thank you.
I'm Darren Denigan. I worked for Knox previous to working for them. I worked for Bing, Jerry Bing, for 33 years. And so I know firsthand how beneficial a pit is in this area. We've had, over the years, when I, I grew up in this valley, there was another gravel plant right across the street from the Douglas High School that a lot of people held, unless you're an old timer, you didn't know about it. Between him and Jerry Bing, they helped supply all the materials to building about half of this valley, three quarters of this valley. Bing was designated back in late 70s, early 80s, when they put Kimerling Road through. He was designated that road to and from his pit. Other roads were accessible, but usually for mostly local deliveries. This is, what's going on here is, you know, we're not going to make everybody happy. You know, there's going to be people that want it, people that don't want it. But this is my livelihood, my career. And Jerry Bing, over the years, he, he employed a lot of people. And, you know, we plan on doing that and having people go out there and work. And so, you know, I, I don't know what else to say other than, you know, we need a road to our, to the pit. And, you know, like Kimerling Road, they, there was a lot of people that would run down the road, bicycle down the road, ride their horses. Not once did I ever see somebody smashed on the road. You know, so I just think that I'm, you know, this needs to be taken care of. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. Garrett Gordon with the Law Firm of Lewis and Roca representing Knox Excavating. This ordinance is clearly retaliatory and unlawful against Knox. If not, why is NDOT exempted? I didn't hear any evidence on the record that a Knox truck is less safe than the NDOT truck, truck going to their two pits. And in reality, there's not a single piece of evidence that supports this ordinance proposed today. In fact, many points are contrary. Number one, you've heard about the Douglas County Transportation Plan approved by this board in 2017. Johnson Lane, major collector. How does that define? Major collector roads provide service to mining areas. The whole public, the whole county was on notice that Johnson Lane as a major collector would provide service to mining areas. This is absolutely in violation of that plan. The MOU with the BIA, cooperating agency, not just a random term, but a legal term, and this county signed the MOU as a cooperating agency with the language that Johnson Lane will be the principal roadway to access the mining site. Sign that document. This ordinance would breach that document with the BIA. In addition, a traffic impact study was conducted as a response to this commission. That concluded, you have level of service in your transportation plan for a reason. This proposal does not violate, does not exceed your levels of service. The county did not, the staff did not, no one objected to that finding by the traffic. The finding of no significant impact, the Fonzie, after extensive studies in regards to life of the road. Unfortunately, staff only read the first half of the sentence. The second half of the sentence from the Fonzie, it says, however, when factoring for the years of the pavement that has already been in use, the estimated life along this segment of Johnson Lane would still meet typical pavement design life of 20 years for new pavement, even with the addition of mine traffic. Evidence on the record that the life of the pavement is not impacted by this project, which is why we have a Fonzie for this project. In addition, and maybe most importantly, this body approved an agreement with Knox. For what? For Johnson Lane. On the record, Mr. Ritchie said, you On the record, Mr. Ritchie said, you cannot stop this project. You cannot stop trucks. If you do something, it's going to be in retaliation of this project. So Mr., so you approved an agreement on the record saying, in exchange for using Johnson Lane, you're going to get gross proceeds from the royalties to maintain and improve Johnson Lane. Approval of this ordinance is an exact breach of that agreement that you guys already approved. So I would say I agree with the constitutional assertions earlier and that unfortunately, if we can't hopefully sit down and discuss, we've requested continuance today to sit down and try to discuss a compromise. I think the county will be on the hook for a multimillion dollar judgment. Thank you.
Good, still morning. Good morning. My name is Teri Kyler. I'm a, I'm a Johnson Lane resident. And I just wanted to say that those of us who live in the Johnson Lane area, none of us are really trying to take away any of the Knox people's livelihood. We believe in free enterprise. We believe in the ability of mineral rights owners to be able to use their, use their, use their land. But we feel that it is of greater need that the residents in the area can feel safe and that the county does not have to pay for, for maintaining that road. And that we think the small area is probably workable because that is an area that can be monitored and taken care of rather than trying to do the whole road. So I think it's important that the residents of the area, I'm sorry, I don't know how many residents we have in the Johnson Lane area, but it's, we want to be able to coexist with any mine that's put in. We're not trying to stop, as much as we'd like to, we're not trying to stop the mine. We're saying, please, 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 take those trucks on a different route. And if it costs the eventual, people who use it, people who use the proceeds from the, not the proceeds, people who use the products from the mine, if it costs a little more, then so be it. It's not fair to weigh that potential cost against the cost of our safety and health. Thank you.
Brandon Hill, fifteen-year resident here in Douglas County, business owner and owner of property in the Johnson Lane area. We, as a company, have significant residential holdings in, in that specific area. So I do say that because it does give us standing in, in that regard. I strongly would advocate and suggest a continuance of this item. There are very legitimate and real concerns that have been expressed regarding public safety and other things, but there are also very, very, very real legal issues regarding a possible taking, regarding the constitutionality of what's being proposed. And I think in a best-case scenario, Douglas County challenging, trying to defend this ordinance in litigation in federal court would be, in a best-case scenario, roll of the dice. And could potentially cost the county millions of, millions of dollars, lots and lots of money. Not only that, and I think what could be the worst thing of all, is all these concerns that have been expressed. Now, all these residents, Douglas County itself, you lose a seat at the table. By rolling the dice against Bureau of Indian Affairs, the family that owns that property, Knox Excavating that has the lease, you're, you're risking, you're throwing away an opportunity. You have a small window right now, an opportunity. Continue this item, go back to the table in good faith. Don't retrade in the eleventh hour like was done by a prior county manager after an agreement was executed, an agreement was reached. Provide real leadership that will provide real solutions. Aggregate is needed for public works projects and private industry. Aggregate is essential and vital to our economy. We should not have to rely on aggregate sources from Washoe County, Churchill County, Carson City, and other places. We shouldn't have to import that at a very expensive premium. Public works projects use way more aggregate than private sector. It is in the fiduciary interest of Douglas County, who you serve, to, you know, be concerned and care about the cost of public works project and the cost of bringing in aggregate. So there's a better way. I promise you that. So again, I urge you to continue this. Go back to the table, negotiate in good faith, and provide leadership. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Thank you. Glenn Martell, Nevada Builders Alliance. Appreciate your time today. Obviously, a very difficult subject to discuss. We would concur with the previous two gentlemen that talked about a continuance at this stage. As a representative of over a hundred businesses within the county, obviously, we're concerned about the economic development opportunities, the supply of aggregate for building in the area, but also for the quality of life for those employees, their owners, the employees and the residents, the rest of the residents in the county. When we look at the impact of that along that corridor, obviously, some misunderstanding potentially of information or maybe some information that wasn't included. As was said earlier, I will take the chairman's advice and quickly say ditto. I don't want to repeat everything. But I do think there is a great opportunity for the county to sit down at the table with the owner, with the leaseholder, with the residents in the area, with potentially other business owners in the county, and look at what might be accomplished to the benefit of all within, in Douglas County. Thank you.
Hi, Julie Shepherd, Johnson Lane area. Some good points have been made on all sides. I'm definitely for free rights and you've got the property. We don't want to limit you, the mining, it's just the route that you're going to take. We're not pleased with. One thing that hasn't been mentioned that I think really alarmed the residents is the operating hours. Sunup to sundown, six days a week. Okay, Saturday mornings, you know, when you have the day off, you're out gardening, you're going to be listening to it. During the summer, it's light until almost nine o'clock at night, and so we're supposed to listen to trucks 6:00 AM till 9:00 PM. My first thought when I read that was, surely that's only a negotiating position. You know how you ask for more than you think you can get, and that has never been reduced. So wanted to bring that up. That is, that's really freaking people out. Thanks.
Nick Nichols again, Johnson Lane resident, one of the major off-road people up there. But that's really not the point. I'd say that on this deal, it really, to be fair to everybody, it needs to stay facts and objective. Emotions and people's opinions and all that isn't going to ever solve any of this. So you, I believe the county manager, you guys mentioned that the county possibly could fund an environmental assessment. Far as I know, there's been a one-sided assessment done. And most people don't have too much faith in it because it's pretty obvious. So if, I agree with some people talking about a continuance, that this definitely isn't going to be solved over shutting that little section and I, I looked at the same thing, or the little section, Johnson, and said, you know, we're not looking to push something off on some other neighbors or screw somebody out of business or a need for a community. I think, you know, as a county, I would like to think on a national level, everybody, and I'm, I mean, I can get a pretty hard stand on things, but we, I would like to think on a county level, where we all live here for a reason. We love this county, the smaller type community. But to be objective and have this thing dealt with facts, because one of the things we need, another, an independent, objective environmental assessment. And if the county can fund that, then I would think that the developers and the people want to run this, if there's nothing, like, they would be, want that to help instill, again, pub, like, confidence, like, hey, how are they going to look against each other? Are they gonna pretty much say the same things or is one going to say something completely different? Then you go from there. And I hope people really listen to what Stacy Clark said, because there's nothing that's covering around, possible, and again, it's possible, long-term health and safety effects of a large, well-established community that was already there. I spent a lot of time up in those hills. I'm one of the people that goes up, and I'm not doing this toot my horn. I go up and I spend my own time and dime to clean up the people who can't haul their trash out, can't take the dump. So I fill up big trailers and haul it to the dump because I want the hills to be, like, nice for everybody. Like, I'm not, I'm starting to like, not like shooters, honestly, and I'm a lifetime shooter. But I'm saying, I really encourage the county, if they can fund it, and we need another environmental assessment, I would hope the people looking to run this operation would be, would want that. But again, the long-term health and safety effects are left undetermined. And then when that's happening in ten or twenty years, people are left in the dust, re-drilling their wells deeper or whatever it is. So I just encourage that in another environmental assessment, please, and let's all try to work together on this in a civil manner.
Thank you, sir. All right, please. Is there any further public comment? Saying none, I'm going to bring it back to the board. I've been asked to have a short break before we continue from the comments from the board. And so we will take ten minutes. We will return at 12:15. All right, I'm gonna bring the meeting back to order. Thank you. One of the reasons that we took a break, well, there's a couple of reasons. Number one, there's that room down the hall that everybody needed to have a few moments with. However, I want you to know that these, this board did not meet behind closed doors. We did not do anything other than having some questions by, from staff, on an individual basis. So there was no, no whatevers behind closed doors, there were no smoking cigars, and so I want you to know that we violated nothing. So, having said that, I'm going to bring it back to the board, we have some heavy discussing to do. And I will start with Mr. Tarkanian.
Good, because I got a lot to say, and I'll try to say it fast, so everybody doesn't get pissed off. I want to start off by saying that I'm in favor of having an aggregate mine here in Douglas County. I've been told by a number of people that this is necessary. I know there's a shortage, and that, and that it will reduce the costs, and, and I'm all in favor of it. My concern has always been the public safety, and I needed to ask the county manager this too. When we met, it was my understanding that the, a reduction in the price of homes is one of the bases we can use for an ordinance like this. One of the, one of the speakers said it wasn't. Can you address that?
I don't know if I can speak to the, the legal implications.
All right.
I, just to clarify, Commissioner Tarkanian, I believed I was answering your question specifically to appealing the EA. I felt that it was one of the weakest points in the EA document.
Okay, then maybe I misunderstood you. Oh, so let me get, get back to, so my big concern's always been the public safety of the, of the residents that live in this area. They moved there before there was a proposal for this mine pit. They had no indication that they were gonna have to live and experience what they're gonna experience if it goes through. So that's my biggest concern. I've always thought the best results in contentious matters is working out some type of compromise. The, the residents may not be 100% happy, and Bing may not be 100% happy, I'm sorry, Knox. Bing's definitely not gonna be happy. So, I, I've always thought the compromise would be the best, and I offered to meet with Knox when this item was put on the agenda, and I was told Knox didn't want to meet with us. This is through a third part of Mr. Hill back, back there, who, Brandon is like, one of my closest friends, and I really trust what he says. And, and, and I, I was communicating through him. So that's how we got to that. And, and I was told that Knox didn't want to meet, that they felt that they had a strong enough case, and they would beat us in court if that was the case. And I don't, I, I disagree with that, because I think that our responsibility as a county commission is to protect the health and safety of our residents. That's gotta be the primary consideration. I understand there's been a lot of talk about property rights here. It's, I see this the same as the vocational rental issue. You have property rights, but you don't have a right to do anything you want with the property. There are restrictions on all properties. That's what land use is about. And although the best use financially may be for a mine here, it may not be the best use for the community if it affects their public health and safety. And, and I think that's the, gonna, would be the basis of our, of us passing an ordinance is going to be that matter. And, just a second, let me get to the rest of my notes. So it, it seems to me, when Knox is saying we're gonna take, we're gonna exclude them from being able to operate their business, they're saying that we ha- they have to use the cheapest road possible for them to operate this business. And I don't think that's the case either. We have a lot of roads in Douglas County that there's either no trucks on them, or they're restricted, the, the weights of the trucks. It will cost more to use a different road and get around those homes, but, but it's, it's still available if, if Knox wanted to operate that business there. If not, then maybe another business would be better. The ordinance, this ordinance we're talking about today prohibits trucks east of Nye Road. The road is primarily pedestrian, equestrian, and recreational use. That's what it is. And you're gonna have 170 trucks coming by with 1,000 to 2,000 tons at least six days a week with that use. Now who in their right mind thinks that's a compatible use? The EA acknowledges that the road is not suitable for heavy trucks. The EA acknowledges that the road will decrease in the number of years of its lifetime. The county does not have the money to maintain these roads directly. But my support for this ordinance is more than just this little area, and I think if we focus just on this little area, I'm not being transparent with you. My concern is, for all these homes that live on Johnston Lane, and this public, this, the, the public safety for them. I know Mr. Hill very well, and the kind of person he is with his family, and I would ask him, and he doesn't have to answer, or anybody else sitting, anybody from Bing sitting here, and I don't expect an answer. Would you want 170 trucks carrying tons, 100,000 to 2,000 tons of gravel coming by your home every single day? Is that something that you would want? And if it's not, then maybe you could understand the concerns of the residents here. I went through the reduction in home value. I think the EA was wrong when it concluded there was little public safety risk. And I say this because, what are the questions I was trying to say? The EA, and this is a lot, Knox has talked about this a lot in their, their meeting, they're saying, hey, you have Federal Express, you have UPS, you have Starbucks, you have all these other trucks that are going on Johnson Lane, but they're east, they're west of Vicki Lane. They're not in the area we're talking about. I think, if you can get your material to west of Vicki Lane and have the trucks come, that'd be great. That would solve all the problems. You'd be taken away from having to go down the residential neighborhoods. It's not just that, and all roads are not considered the same, and the EA considered them the same. You guys have stated that Johnson Lane is a, what kind of road? Collector road. But it's my understanding it's a major collector road up until Hayborn. It's a minor collector road up to Fremont, and after Fremont, it's not designated as a collector road. Well, we've been trying to get the answer, and that was one of the questions I had at the break, we haven't even got the answer on it. But it's not the same, there's different type of roads with different uses. I mean, it's almost all industrial east, west of Vicki Lane, and it's almost all residential the other area. The EA, when they made their decision, they, they used the, they used the percentage of, of trucks traveling on Johnson Lane compared to all the travel there, and they used it based upon the trucks that are traveling west of Vicki Lane. Why do they do that? Because that's where all the trucks are at now. And they used that to input it to what it would be like east of Vicki Lane. Well, first of all, you have all those homes east of Vicki Lane, you don't have all those homes west of Vicki Lane. Second of all, and this is my big concern, is they treat trucks all the same. There's a huge difference between a UPS truck, a Centus truck, Starbucks truck, than a big truck with trailers and thousands of tons, tens, however many tons are gonna fit on each one of those trucks, there's gonna be 1,000, 2,000 every single day. There's a huge difference in those trucks, and that analysis should have been looked at when they discussed this. There, there are quite, okay, and even with the, 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 no trucks at this time going on through, by Knox, the NDOT had used it recently, and there was an accident on Fremont and, and Johnson Lane. If there's an accident already with the little amount of trucks being used, how many more accidents will there be with 170 more trucks every day? And with that, the EA said, well, it, it won't be a substantial increase in risk. Well, what is substantial? Is one death substantial? Is one paralyzed individual substantial? Is one person being hit by a truck substantial? Or is that just part of doing business? And then you're asking us, as a county commission, to, to, to vote for this and have this on our conscience. Look, and nobody's more pro-business in this, this, this entire area than I am, but I'm also pro-residents, and, and I would love to find a compromise. I would love to find a compromise and work something out. Okay, I'm gonna finish up real quick, I'm sorry, I'm taking longer than I wanted. Questions not answered. How many daily truck trips are there currently on East Vicki Road, when they're making this analysis? And how many of them were from heavy-duty trucks as opposed to small trucks? Knox has acknowledged this operation may expand in the future. Is there gonna be more than 170 trucks later on that, that this road's gonna have to have? I think there are other alternative ways to get around the road, it'd be very expensive, and it may not pencil in, I understand that, but there are ways that could be looked at at least. Or either other ways of maybe transporting the, the product out there. I'm not sure if it's possible or not, but it's been proposed to the board that they would use a transparent, trans, they would use a belt to bring, bring the, the product through, the conveyor belt, thank you. I am so bad with words. That they could bring a conveyor belt down the residential area to maybe where all the trucks are at in Johnson Lane. This is something that Dave Park had record, had suggested he would do. So I'm just saying, listen, I'd like to get, I'd like to get a solution here, but let me just, let me throw one final thing, and I'll be done. When you get an attorney to sit here and make allegations that attack us, it doesn't do any good. It just makes it harder for us to be reasonable and sit back and say, we're gonna let you threaten us, and get away with it. And, and I, I, the comments that you made, you made, first of all, you said this was a conduit, a con road, whatever, it's, it's not fully, you said that a previous board had approved it, and it's a contract, and therefore reliable by it. Well, if it wasn't signed by both parties, it's not an offer and acceptance, you know that as an attorney, it's not binding. You said that, uh, county, former county manager had, had said that they, that, that it was, we should do it, and that we didn't have a choice, but he's not the manager anymore. And I disagreed with him anyways. You said the county, uh, man, um, board members were in favor, but that's not us. We're, we're a different board member, maybe it should have been approved and, and done before. You bring it to us, or we have to do it. Okay, fine, I'm just gonna say this. I don't, I, I, I don't think this is a perfect solution, but I think it's the best solution we have right now. If we can come to something better, I would love to do that for all parties, and that's where I stand.
Commissioner Hales.
Oh, sorry, did you want to go next? I just fully agree on the point Commissioner Tarkanian made, that the comments by the attorney were not helpful. Especially the suggestion that by signing the MOU as a cooperating agency, we were somehow binding the county to be okay with this. Not helpful. That aside, I have listened to Johnson Lane residents, and I want to say, I hear you. I hear you. I believe you. I am concerned about the things you're concerned about. Unfortunately, the question for this commission is not, are we okay with this mine and the trucks on the road? Are we okay with the trucks on the road? That's not the question for us. As I look at this, I have one, one question, one driving interest, and that is, I want to do what's best for our residents. And we have heard you, and we care about you. So as I look at this today, I have two, I think, two decisions, two options. One is to pass the ordinance today. The other is to take the ordinance again, to take up the ordinance again in a few weeks' time, and see during that time if there might be some way that we can address some of your concerns that doesn't involve the risk that the passing the ordinance today would involve. And for that, and as I weigh what's in the best interests of our residents with only those two options, because those are the only two options we have today, I favor putting a pause on this to see if we can work towards something that gives some amount of mitigation, and then taking the ordinance up again at a, after we see what's possible.
Commissioner knows that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking out at you guys out there, all of you, even you guys in the black shirts. You're mem- you're living in this county. You are our primary concern. Now, if we have a concern for you, one of the things would be, the one lady who came up and talked about health issues, air pollutants carrying cobalt, arsenic, and other fugitive dust, as she, she mentioned. Those winds that we have, we do have winds here a lot. I learned that when I got here in 2001. That is gonna carry that dust over into the cattle grazing area. That's a beef cattle industry out there. Guess what? Not only you, but the cattle are gonna get it too. All right? All right? All right, one, one person came in and talked about that little section of road. And I didn't like the attitude we had on that. And I said, okay, if we put that road, piece of road off limit to trucks, you're not going to get the dust, the cows aren't going to get the dust, and you're going to be safer for it. All right. Now, I'm going to vote yes on this one. And I'm going to vote yes because of the safety and health of you guys out there. If I had to go and condemn the entirety of Johnson Lane to protect your health and safety, I would do it. So if caution comes, what price is it cost? Make sure that you have that health and safety. Thank you.
Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you. The thing I want to, I'm, I'm going to quote from Chapter 1008, Control Devices of our county code, 10.08-040 Vehicle Restrictions on Highways or Streets. It starts out, "As authorized by state law, the Board of County Commissioners recognizes and restricts the following highways or streets as set forth below and authorizes the erection of suitable markers which may be located at such points as the Department of Public Works deems appropriate, except as provided in Section 10.08.050." And I'm not going to quote that one, because it's, I don't think it, uh, it, it goes further into the restrictions. "It is unlawful for an operator or driver of any vehicle to operate, drive, move, stop, or park a vehicle in violation of the restrictions of NRS Chapter 484D and as set forth below." And below that, we have nine current restrictions. A, Riverview Drive, posted sign, weight limit seven tons. B, Dresslerville Road, posted sign, not a truck route. C, Tillman Lane, posted sign, weight limit of 10 tons. D, Waterloo Lane, from State Route 88 to State Route 756, posted sign, no trucks with a symbol. E, Waterloo Lane, from State Route 756 to US 395, posted sign, weight limit of eight tons. Uh, Dressler Lane Bridge, 1600, posted sign, weight limit of three tons. And it, and it goes on to list several others. I, so I don't see that by doing this, for some reason, at some point in time, the previous boards of directors or commissioners have deemed that these routes should not, or should not have trucks or should be weight limited. Okay? So I don't see that it's not within our jurisdiction to identify another road within our county and place a rate restriction on that as well, according to this. And in accordance with the restrictions of NRS and state law. So anyways, with that being said, though, I, I did want to indicate that, you know, when, when this issue came before the board back in 2020, I was not sitting on this board. And a commissioner was appointed to negotiate with Knox in good faith to come to some agreements with the county in regards to the use of that road. And I expressed my concerns at that time as a member of the public because I didn't feel like those restrictions went far enough. I still feel like perhaps there is another opportunity for us to sit down with Knox in good faith, if they're willing to do so, and try to see if we can come to for another agreement that would be more palatable, not only to this board, but also to the residents of that area. Certainly respecting the, the health and safety concerns. Because I think that's, once again, the primary concerns of, of us as a board and of our residents. So anyways, I think that's all I want to say right now. But I think maybe, maybe it's time to take a deep breath and a pause and, and, and see if we can come to some other conclusions that will benefit everybody.
Thank you. Commissioner Hales.
Oh, I would be ready with a motion, but you might, you probably want to talk first.
I would like to speak too. My, I have a question for counsel, our counsel. If we decided to delay this and put it off to a separate meeting or another meeting, what is lost?
Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. As a practical effect, not much would be lost. This ordinance has to be published in the newspaper for two consecutive weeks before it can become effective in any event. As well as, I believe, on the permitting process, there's an appeal that's allowed, which would further delay the ability to operate the mine while the permitting process was appealed. I don't have the exact regulation in front of me. This is just off my memory. But I, I don't believe there would be any practical impact to Knox if, if this is delayed.
I noticed that during the break, you were speaking with the attorneys from the opposition, as it were.
Yes.
Do you feel that if we took a break and pushed this down the road for a meeting or two, do you think that anything could be accomplished in that length of time?
Doug Ritchie again. Yes. They have expressed a willingness to address. A lot of the concerns have been raised. I think they would like an opportunity to have more than three minutes to share their, their thoughts on all of the information that's been provided.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Noesad.
Somebody said that the trucks start rolling tomorrow. So what we do here today, if we delay it, will the trucks still run?
Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. I do not know the answer to that. I believe that if an appeal is filed, that, that there will be a delay in their ability to operate under the permit. There are representatives from the applicant, from the Knoxes here, as well as their attorney. You might want to ask them, and they can make a representation on the record as to what that would mean.
The question in my mind is, if we do delay it, is there going to be any gain for the county? Is, is Knox willing to sit down and talk with us at this point? And counsel, you, you raised your hand. I will recognize you.
For the record, Garrett Gordon, on behalf of Knox. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to speak. So the record's clear. We would absolutely not operate while we discuss potential compromises or win-wins with your, your counsel. We would believe it would be bad faith if we were operating while, while negotiating. So, so the record's clear, we would not operate while negotiating.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, taking you at your word, I'm sure that is. For us to pass an ordinance would have to go before us two more times, and then we would have to publish it in the newspaper. I think the only way we're going to assure this is if we filed an appeal that holds it for the amount of time we discussed. And then if we can settle it beforehand, we could withdraw the appeal. If not, we're going to have to, about four weeks in between where negotiations end, and we try to re-vote on a new amendment, a new ordinance, I'm sorry.
And if I, may, Mr. Chairman, your indulgence? Let me just add to my statement. Obviously, you know, it can't just be open-ended, and negotiations never come to one way or the other. So maybe it'd be the benefit to at least set a date, 30 days, 60 days, that we all work toward, do not operate during that period of time, and then hopefully come back here with a, with a compromise. But if not, then the gun is to our head, if, if you will, where the ordinance is back on the agenda, and you take whatever action you believe is appropriate.
Thank you. Mr. Chair. Commissioner Gardner.
I believe the appeal process is 90 days. Is that right? And I agree with the time certain type of process, okay? I think it's important that we not delay this too long, but that we give ourselves an appropriate amount of time to, because sometimes it can't be done in one or two days. So, but the other thing is, is that I, I fail to mention, and I know you, as chair, have expressed many times with this board that your displeasure and distaste at kicking cans down the road. And I, and I share that feeling. I don't want to kick this can down the road, but I think kicking it down the road with a time certain date is, is probably the appropriate thing to do at this point in time.
Thank you. Any more comments from the board? Saying none, I'm ready for a motion of some sort.
I see that Mr. Jackson is wanting to say something else. So I'm just noting that. And also note that this is, the chair's prerogative in running the meeting to figure those things out. And I'm glad I don't have to.
Thank you for that. Mr. Jackson, this is irregular. However, if you have something that you want to say, please say it. And I'm not reopening public comment. I'm simply allowing you to speak.
Thank you. I'll try to make this real brief. I think trying to renegotiate might be a good idea. But I think you also should pass the ordinance so that if negotiations fail and fail quickly, we still have that on the books. You can always come back and change this ordinance, just like you're changing now. So I think that you should stand your ground. You've been threatened by two different lawyers. Don't cave in. But I think negotiating would be fine. But it's still, they want to use Johnson Lane, and that's going to be their point. They're not going to back off of that. So I think you still need to pass this ordinance and then negotiate after that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I, I think I might want to add to that. This board is not very good at caving. And no, I'm not opening this up for public comment anymore. I'm bringing it back to the board. I need a motion.
Commissioner Hales.
A quick question. Do we have to start all over, or can we pause this? I mean, do we have to re-notice it, do two hearings? Or can we just pause this and take it up again?
Chairman, if I may. Doug Ritchie, the District Attorney's Office. No, the statute contemplates multiple second hearings, if you want to call that, a public hearing. However, and if you set a date certain, no other notice would be required. But if a date certain is not set, then I would recommend that you pub, when you do set that second date, it'd be published in the paper pursuant to NRS. But you do not have to have another introduction.
All right, then, our choices, to me, I think three weeks might be too short. We do have a three-week break between this meeting and our next meeting. So I want to, I want to make a motion to continue. I'm just wondering of what date to continue it to. 90 days. Okay. So what is our meeting date? Let's pause and figure out what our meeting date would be about 90 days from now.
October the 3rd or the 17th.
Okay. Then October 17th. Not quite 90 days, but a good amount of time. What's the first meeting in November?
The 7th.
All right. So my motion would be that we continue this item to November 7th.
Our question. One, one person made the suggestion that we go ahead and pass the resolution now and then react with the later agenda item to see if we want to change it.
Commissioner Hales, I, I, I will second that, but I will like to suggest a friendly amendment to that. And I think it was to continue it, but enter into discussions with Knox excavation in this regard. I think that's what needs to be stated in the, in the record.
Okay. So the motion would state that we continue this item to November 7th to allow for discussions with Knox excavation. And that would be the motion. And, and I hear Commissioner Noesad's concerns, but I'd rather get a second and then discuss those concerns.
I will second the motion.
Commissioner Noesad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The suggestion to pass this ordinance now will put it into force so that we have a basis for the negotiations. So we may want to keep some of it. They may want to put something else in. Let's, let's go from there. Let's go, let's go from a base, base start.
I, I have a, I assume this, I can ask this question now? Are we in discussion? Okay. Why would we not want to file the appeal and hold it 90 days for sure? Okay.
Any further comments or questions from the board?
Do we need to, do we need to add that as an amendment?
I'm asking our attorney.
Doug Ritchie, for the record. To be clear, the, the issue of the appeal is not on the agenda for today. That's a staff issue. But to answer your question, if an appeal is filed, it will stay. In addition to the representations of Knox, that nothing will happen during negotiations. That will also prevent them to, from acting on any permit issued by BLM or BIA.
Thank you.
I could say one other thing. If you were to pass this ordinance today, you would then need to, at least two hearings, which is at least a month or more to undo what, if you were passing it today. Versus if you continue it, it just takes one hearing, just logistically.
Commissioner.
I was just going to say, logistically, it's cleaner to pause this and, and then reconsider it, rather than pass it today. And so that's why I'm in favor of pausing it. It's easier on staff, logistically cleaner.
Okay, so that we're clear on what we're talking about. Madam Clerk, would you read, read for us the motion that's on the floor? Excuse me, Commissioner.
All right, I'm going to say it again. If we pause this, does that mean that this agenda item as written will be used in the next meeting?
Doug Ritchie, the District Attorney's Office. If this is, if this ordinance, as drafted, is paused, it will come back to this board, absent some modification after negotiations with Knox's representatives and further feedback from the public.
Any further questions? Madam Clerk, would you read back the motion?
Tanya Baldi for the record. The motion I have on the record is to continue the item to the November 7th meeting and enter into negotiation. enter into negotiations with NOx excavating.
Is it clear to everybody what the motion is? Saying no questions, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have only one more item, but can we take a short break or not? I know we're taking a long.
All right, we'll take a short break for, until 1:00, and then we will finish. Item number four. Saying no questions, I'm going to call for the vote.
Aye.
We have only one more item, but can we take a short break or not? I know we're taking a long.
All right, we'll take a short break for, until 1:00, and then we will finish. I will call the meeting back to order. We'll move on to item number four on the agenda. of a public nuisance at 1431 Aggett Road, Wellington, Nevada, APN 1022-15-001-045, approving a report and account of remediation expenses, and a special assessment in the amount of
I'm trying to remember if it's morning or afternoon. I got here earlier. Ernie Stralow for the record. I want to thank you. I bring in my code enforcement hat today, so we're not going to talk about the other item up at the lake today, so we'll work on this. And so in your packet, I think it's on page 443, is a small presentation related to the property down in Wellington on Aggett. It's the second, it's the larger of two properties. I think I brought to you about eight, nine months ago, a property on granite that we did, and so that was one acre. This is a little bit bigger than two acres. It's about two and a half acres. And it was something that we worked on, and I'll tell you a little story about it. I also have a staff report in the packet that highly details the timeline that you can reference, if you'd like. But what I have here on the screen is, on the front page, I have, and this is actually off our map software. I was able to get an aerial picture of the lot. I didn't, I didn't have a hill I can stand on and take a picture. So this is an aerial view of the property in question, and you can see all the stuff on it that we worked on. And we'll look at it as comparison on some later pictures. But basically, the property is down in TRE, and it's Zone SFR2, single-family detached. As I mentioned, it's about 2.56 acres. It has a home on it, a little over 2,000 square feet. Its desert landscape is typical in the TRE area, with trees and sagebrush and stuff like that. And then the property is surrounded by other residential properties of typically the same size, and there's a church on the adjacent corner of the property. We, when we initially put this together, we thought the complaint started in 2007, and we found recently, when we were going through the DA records, that it went back to the 1990s. And so this is what's limited, that's what we noted in here. So complaints started in the mid-'90s, more recent complaints began about 2007, and from probably 2007 to about 2021, 2022, we typically had either no code enforcement or one code enforcement officer, and the turnover happened. And so typically, cases were most likely closed in those days on pictures, and not verified perhaps back in, and so that's probably why they were closed. But more recently, in the last couple of years, our team, we've been trying to go through the files and clean up the open cases that we've had, and tried to clean up everything here. And so this particular property, we spent some time and focused on since 2022, and we followed up with letters and fines and so forth. And we did a final service to the owner of the property back in early 2023. The issue that we're addressing here is that the condition of the property constituted a public nuisance, as outlined in the staff report, as I mentioned, there's about five pages there. And then the actions taken between the original complaint and multiple follow-ups through onsite inspections, certified letters, and a last and final order. We began the process of obtaining professionals to clear the property, and the process was completed in April 2024. I do want to note, and I think we talked about this in the IRC prior to this report out, we were able to keep a lot of the costs down on this particular project. We had a tow company called Audi Towing out of Mount House that, in Lyon County, that for free removed almost 100 cars off the property before we started this process. So that was no charge to us or the homeowner, and so that's not in these figures. So it was a little bit quicker for us to be able to do that. So we're trying to be sensitive.
Did you say 100?
Yeah, there was, yeah, it was 100 vehicles.
Ah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, if you, I think I have an inventory somewhere in the packet, I don't know what page, but there was, you know, there was 276 tires, there were a few buses, or, yeah, there's a lot of stuff there. This is kind of the after pictures. I think, like I said, I can't get aerial views, so we did our best to try to get you ground-level views of the two and a half acres, so there are different vantage points. And so if you go out and you look through one of the fences, you can see a lot of the stuff was removed. They're allowed to keep a certain amount of cars per code, and then we take the rest. And then you can kind of see, these were, both of these slides here, you know, these, I have about 500 pictures of this property, so I just selected a few, but there's, you know, these were pretty much packed with stuff, right? And then I have, on the next page, here's a, here's a different angle, right? So this is, I think, from the left side of the property, looking back to the back of the, back of the fence lines. You can see that it's all, most of it's cleared out. It looks like here on the right picture, they were just, there was some stuff that just had to be taken away. And then another picture. So, so there was, you know, as part of the process, we had Douglas Disposal was a partner. They brought 40-foot, what do you call them, junk bins out to the property, two at a time. They didn't charge us for the labor, for driving the trucks back and forth, they just charged us for the trailer, the bed that they leave there. They used the church as a, kind of a staging area in the property. And then the tow company, they did a few more things, and then we used Hero Environmental. And in fact, they've done such a good job, we, this is the second one we've used them on. They're out of Reno. There's, Carson City has inquired about using them also for their remediation efforts. So it's good to know that, you know, some of our counties are coming to us to ask what works. This is a breakdown of the process, so as I mentioned, Hero Environmental, they have a history, well, they have, they have a history now. They have, you know, two properties they've done on, they're easy to work with. The first property took a couple of weeks, and it was smaller. This property, they built it into grids and made it faster, so it was done in a week. So we were trying to, they were trying to save us money, too, so, and the homeowner. And then I mentioned about Douglas Disposal. The labor and equipment, mobile pickup, rendering equipment, drum supply and so forth, was all included in the costs that are, that I outlined below. Per code, we have the environmental and then the Douglas Disposal. The code allows, 691 allows us to recover overhead costs to the county, so that's what the 12,000 is, and then there's the total. And so this would be similar to what we did previously. Well, we put a resolution in your packet, and we would like you to approve 2024-R-083, and it confirms the condition of the property did constitute a public nuisance. It approves that you agree with the report and account of the information we provided, and that we can assess a special assessment on the property in the amount of $72,112.62. You know, and so once you approve it, it'll, it'll get, once you sign off on it, chair, it'll get walked across the hallway to the treasurer's office, and then it shows up in the, in the bill. So, and that's really all I have. I thought you'd like to see some cool equipment while you're thinking about it and want to talk about it. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything.
What do you, what do you do with 200 cars?
Well, I've, they scrap.
Where do they go?
Ernie Stralow for the record. Some of them went to the Carson City landfill or scrap yards, some of them were, some of the cars, there was, there was about seven or eight cars that are, can be restored, redone and sold for money. So I think that, and they were taking them to Mount House, so that was a little bit of a drive in Lyon County, so.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Commissioner Gardner.
Mr. Stralow, thank you for this report. Two things, I guess. Number one, before we remove vehicles from any lot in the county, we always ensure that those vehicles, we run those, we cooperate with DMV, is it? I don't know that you mentioned that aspect of the process.
Ernie Stralow for the record. I might not be going in the right order, but what we do is, we identify all the vehicles, we make a list, and then we contact the DMV. The DMV made a site visit, and they go through the whole property. And then they, what goes from there is that, once they get through the DMV and the DMV clears it, we issue a scrap certificate for the tow company to come take them.
Will we ensure that they're not stolen, or not owned?
Ernie Stralow for the record. Yeah, yeah, that's why the DMV comes out. They do that, and we also work with the sheriff's office on any kind of discrepancies that come up.
Okay. So all we're trying to do here is basically, by this ordinance, should it pass, is recover our costs, right? We're not, we're not making a profit on this, we're just trying to recover our costs to the general fund, of the costs to mitigate this issue.
Ernie Stralow for the record. Exactly, sir. Ernie Straylo for the record. It might not be going in the right order, but what we do is we identify all the vehicles. We make a list, and then we contact the DMV. The DMV made a site visit, and they go through the whole property. And then they, what goes from there is that once they get through the DMV and the DMV clears it, we issue a scrap certificate for the tow company to come take them.
Will we ensure that they're not stolen or not?
Ernie Straylo for the record? Yeah, that's why the DMV comes out. They do that, and we also work with the sheriff's office on any kind of discrepancies that come up.
Okay. So all we're trying to do here is basically, by this ordinance, should it pass, is recover our costs, right? We're not making a profit on this. We're just trying to recover our costs to the general fund, of the costs to mitigate this issue.
Ernie Straylo for the record. Exactly, sir.
Any further questions from the board? Since this is an action item, we will open for public comment.
First, I want to say that the code people treated me very well. Okay, I got along with the code people as best we could. But for the record, I want to say, oh, it's Michael Martins. Okay. For the, I just want to say for the record is that there was over 100 cars, but I had permission from the code people, let's say, 10 years ago, maybe five, 10 years, that if I put a fence around my property, I could collect cars. And that's how I ended up with a lot of cars that were in TRE area that people wanted to get rid of, because I thought, you know, people would come and say, you want this car? And I said, yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you said a word I didn't understand. You had an agreement with who?
What was that?
You had an agreement with who?
The code people, yes. And the code people said if I put a fence around my property that I could, you know, collect cars, okay? And that's what started the whole mess in the first place. And maybe I shouldn't have collected so many or whatever, but thus I did. And then the other thing that I want to say is that the wrecking yard, the guy that came out there to take the cars, he had made, it was a verbal, I should have had it written down, we should have made a contract, but the verbal thing was that he was going to clean everything up for, you know, he was, in fact, he was even going to pay me for some of the cars because of the, that's what we had talked about, because some of them were actually antique cars that needed, were worth something. And he said he would clean up the whole mess. But then, when the day that he came out to do this, well, then he, they had talked to the code people and made some other kind of a deal. The code people gave, told him he could have all the cars if he took the cars, and they wouldn't charge me. But he was also supposed to clean up, I had trailers and trash and stuff. He was supposed to take care of that, too. And so it wouldn't have cost, no, he'd have got the 100 cars, and then, you know, it wouldn't have cost me what, because then the county ended up coming in and cleaning up, and then they had their charge, which, you know, I mean, that's understandable, but there was an agreement made with this tow guy to clean the mess up, you know? And, yeah, I don't know what else to say, because there's two things, you know. First off, like I said, it wasn't these code people, it was code people before them that did this, you know?
I just have one question. Do you know the name of the person, or do you have anything writing, or is it just what you remember?
Well, there again, it was just, you know, because technically, he's right. I've been, I've had this place since, you know, I've been living there since 2000. I've owned the property even 20 years before that. I bought it in 80. And I've been fighting the county, you know, with cars for 20, 40 years, you know, off and on, you know. They'd come in, and they'd say, you need to clean up, and I'd clean it all up, and they'd come back, and it would be okay, and then they'd start collecting more. Well, then finally, here, I don't know when exactly it was, but the last time, you know, like, let's say 10 years ago, they came in and they said, okay, you build this fence, and you can collect your cars, you know? And that's what mushroomed into more cars that I probably should have had. And that's how I ended up with so many. And then when the new people, you know, in the last, what, like he said, what, three, four years, they said, oh, well, they've changed it all. The county, it's a new ordinance now, and it's got to be cleaned up and everything like this. And we've been, we've been basically dealing with this for a while, but the biggest problem that I did have, like he mentioned, is that, see, half of those cars didn't have titles, and we had a hard time getting rid of them. And so then they finally figured a way of going through the DMV that they could, you know, just come in, because none of them were stolen. None of them were, I didn't have any cars that were stolen. And they were all, most of them were given to me, actually. And we, I don't know what else to say, because, you know, that's what took a long time for me to get rid of the cars, because I had a hard time getting rid of them. You know, there was no junkyards that would take them because of the new, you know, they've got new laws now about taking cars. And so then the DMV worked out some kind of thing about, you know, saying, you know, check, make sure they weren't stolen and all that, and, you know, and so they could give a junk certificate to the people, whoever I decided to go with. I had two or three different junk people I could have dealt with, but I believed this guy, that he was going to do what he said he was going to do, and I agreed for him to do it. And when he came out there, well, then that was, everything changed. It didn't happen the way that we had talked about, because that's, you know.
Any more questions from the board? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a action item. Is there any other public comment?
Jim Jackson, just a quick question. What designates a public nuisance? And does it apply to Johnson Lane?
Mr. Straylo?
This is Ernie Straylo for the record. I have no idea if it applies to Johnson Lane. I don't know how to answer that. Public nuisance is just a home that's unkept and is kept in a poor regard, and 691 has a much more specific detail information on that. I don't know if you want to, I don't have the code in front of me, but.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Angelina Woodall, I reside at the residence, and I just want to say that from the, when we first found out this was a problem, like as a family, we all tried to remedy the situation and made an effort to, like, clean up as best we could in our means. And it was taking some time for us to clean up, so my grandfather would ask for more time from the code enforcement office, because we just couldn't afford it. At one point, they did offer us a grant, but when we tried pursuing more information on that, they didn't have any more information on it. And then we also reached out to social services, both here in town and in Carson, and they said they had a program that would help us get dumpsters and everything, but for whatever reason, they decided not to help us, or they said my grandparents couldn't receive services from them, even though my grandparents are on a fixed income and they can't afford it. So we were making the best effort we could within our means. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Saying none, I'll bring it back to the board. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gardner?
These are never easy issues for us to address, and it's unfortunate that it has come to this. And on a weekly basis, when I attend the church that's next door to this, because I am a resident of Topaz Ranch Estates, I get questions from my fellow parishioners about the unsightliness of this property that's next door to the church. While I appreciate what the individuals have indicated in regards to trying to clear this property in previous attempts, I would recognize the fact, as you've indicated, it's almost a 30-year issue, brought to the county somewhere in the 1990s. At what point in time do we decide that we have to pull the trigger and do something by the county to ensure that not only the health and safety of the residents that are living on the property, but those surrounding the property are protected, as well as setting an example for other property owners that we can't allow Topaz Ranch Estates to become the dump of Douglas County? And that's what this property was. I witnessed it, okay? There still is a tremendous amount of unsightly stuff on the front end of the property, and I don't know that we have jurisdiction on that. But the residents, the owners of this property, have put us in a very untenable and unenjoyable position. It's not fun being up here and trying to, and having to do this. However, when it comes to our cost of $72,000, it's not fair to have the other residents, the other 49,980, or 98, if we have a population of 50,000, it's not fair to place that burden on the other 49,998 residents in this county, including myself. And that's all we're trying to do, is recover our costs. We're not trying to make a profit on this. We're not trying to go into the business of being trash disposals, okay? All we're trying to do is, once again, recover the costs that the county has incurred that has come out of the other residents' pockets if we don't recover this cost and forgive this. So unless the other commissioners have comments, I'll make a motion, okay? I move for the adoption of Resolution 2024 R-083 as presented.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Which brings us now to the final presentation-only reports from the board, to which I'm afraid to say anything. I don't want to be politicking for anybody, so, and Mr. Straylo, thank you so much.
And once again, yes, and if you don't mind, I want, you know, him and his team have done a remarkable job down there, and so I can't thank you enough on behalf of the residents of TRE for taking care of this issue. No politicking.
Okay. Item number five for presentation-only announcements, reports, updates from county commissioners and members, including updates in various boards and/or commissions that they may be a member of, or a liaison or meetings, functions they have attended. And it doesn't say anything about what kind of functions, does it? I guess I'm clear then, thank you. They may have attended in any request by a commissioner for discussion of a future agenda item. We will start at the far end and work our way back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a lot today. I did want to indicate, in regards to future agenda items, I believe a young lady in our community has been recently designated as Miss Reno Rodeo, or something to that effect. And maybe that's something that we should recognize as a board, because that's a significant accomplishment. So maybe we can take a look into that. I'm looking at my other responsibilities, Chamber of Commerce, Visitors Authority, Subconservancy, Parks and Rec, NACO, and Quad County Coalition. So I've attended the meetings that have taken place since the last meeting, and I really don't have anything of significance to report in that regard. I did enjoy somewhat, I would say somewhat, I want to preface that, somewhat, with our attendance at the Tahoe Summit yesterday. I was, I guess, I was disappointed in my observation that our congressman, in my mind, got somewhat slighted. And for that matter, other congressmen that were in attendance, that was my observation. It's a personal observation, but I felt like that event, while it's not supposed to be partisan, I thought it did become partisan, so I was disappointed in that. But otherwise, it was something that I think that we need to participate in, and so I will continue to do so, okay?
So I attended that event two years ago, and I'm not going back again, because all they did was talk about how much money they're spending. And I think Mark Amade should put you on payroll as a campaign consultant or promoter.
I have nothing to add.
I have just a few things. I wanted to take a moment and recognize that Marcia Johnson, our administrative, I don't know, what's her title, assistant, who was an incredible asset, has left the county and to do some other things she needed to do, and we just really enjoyed her, and she did a great job, and I wanted to recognize that. I also went to the Tahoe Summit and agree with the sentiments that have been shared. I went to the, just a couple notes, the Chamber Coffee yesterday morning, and those are really well-done, good little events. The Me Phi Phi fundraiser was really fantastic, and that's a great organization. The Tahoe Justice Court and the jail at Tahoe had an open house, and I went up and toward those facilities, because I had never seen the Tahoe jail, and I'm glad to know more about it and to have seen it, and appreciate the good folks who are doing good work up there. That's it for me.
Thank you. I attended the TTD Tahoe Transportation District Board meeting on Wednesday, the 7th, the LTBA Board meeting on October, I'm sorry, on August the 8th, a critical issues meeting that we had with the, in the courtroom, talking about the Future Justice Center. I did that on Friday, and I also attended the Tahoe Summit, and the comments have already been made, other than the fact that it was a beautiful day. Lake Tahoe is a marvelous asset to this country as well as to this county. And with that, I will end item number five and go to closing public comment.
Jim Jackson. Really don't know what to say. We had a couple of lawyers in the audience that were extremely disrespectful and threatening, wouldn't shut up during the meeting. Several people asked one of them in particular to be quiet, and she just got louder. I think that was disrespectful to all of you and to all of us. But it's what gives lawyers a bad name, and why we don't necessarily trust them. I'm hoping that in the negotiations that you're going to be entered into with Knox, primary thing is, is they do not use Johnson Lane. Find some other route. If they refuse, negotiations are over. Johnson Lane in total, down to Vicki, should be no trucks. Don't just put the little section at the top. Do the whole area. I don't think they're going to give up on that. They want the cheapest route out. I listened to them over here talking and out in the hallway talking. They don't care about us, not a bit. They just want money. That's all they're in it for. I think you heard the residents and all their concerns and what they've brought up. They're valid, extremely valid. The one scientist retired, I don't know what she was in, but she brought up a bunch of stuff that I don't want floating in the air up by me. I mean, those of you who have been up by my house, you know where I live, right on the BLM. I look at the road, and they're coming down every day. And when I get my trains up and running and I invite you all up for an open house, you can get to see it, too. So I hope that in your negotiations, that paramount thing is, they do not use Johnson Lane. There are other roads out there that they can go through, but for them to be threatening federal lawsuits... be threatening federal lawsuits and all this, and I think that was uncalled for. I think it was very disrespectful of you folks. I would like to have seen something happen at this meeting. We were all kind of counting on that. But I understand why you postponed it. But just don't fall into the trap that NOx is going to get what they want at the end of this, because they, they will continue to threaten you with everything they can. And so will the other lawyer and her significant other. They're already suing you and stuff, because they want more. So anyway, I don't know what else to say, but, you know, my face is still in you, that you're not going to leave us hanging out there. And I know a lot of people are kind of telling me I'm crazy, but I don't think so yet. So, thank you.
I want to make a comment. I know, I'm sorry. Oh, Carol Strail, I'm sorry. I just want to make a comment that even though we're late in the processing of the Painted Rock Mine, the woman who got up and spoke earlier, Stacy Clark, the scientist toxicologist, made some very good points. And she's got a lot of information, valid information. And I'm going to be moving to ask you that even at this time, I think we need another EA. And I think an independent EA, because I have questions about the governmental EA that was presented to us some months ago. So I am asking that you, as the county commissioners, order a new EA and find out exactly what's out there. I think we need to know. I mean, we're talking about health issues, health, safety, the whole thing. And I think the only way we're going to find that out is if we get another EA. And that's all I need. That's what I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Saying none. We're adjourned.